All right, six thirty, the call is meeting to order, start of the plug.
What allegiance to my.
Welcome, everyone. And I turn things over to Acting Superintendent Goldsner for the celebration of excellence tonight.
Good evening, thank you for coming. I'm going to start with the CAPE Student Leadership Awards Program. One male and one female student from each school in a CAPE member district are eligible to receive the CAPE Student Leadership Award. These students exhibit leadership skills based on the criteria below. Willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. So our first award goes to Carissa Cran. Is she here? Do you want to just stand up? Thanks. Aside from consistently working hard and applying herself academically, Carissa can always be counted on to work well with her peers. Carissa's leadership transcends the classroom walls. During her years at BCS, she has been a member of the BCS tennis team. Moreover, her PE teacher recognized her good sportsmanship, even earning her the award in sixth grade. In her spare time, Carissa has volunteered her time in culinary skills cooking food for the homeless through her church. Moreover, in her travels to Cambodia, her family helps out those impacted. Oh, I'm not gonna be able to say that right, can you say it for me? Yes, thank you. By handling out prepared food, Chris is very deserving of this award, and her teachers are very proud of her. Chris, there will be an award for you, but they just have not come in yet. So as soon as the certificate comes in, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, the next recipient is Ethan DeRogers. Similarly, Ethan displays strong leadership skills inside and outside of the classroom. In addition to applying himself academically, Ethan is a gifted musician and is part of the jazz band. Moreover, he is also a talented runner who is able to earn the most improved runner award by shaving off almost a minute and a half from his running score. That's impressive. Equally as impressive, as a hardworking member of the BCS robotics team, his and the rest of the team's efforts earned them a spot at the world championship in Texas next month. Clearly, when Ethan sets his mind to something, he follows his commitments and is able to achieve remarkable feats. We cannot wait to see what the future holds for such a talented young man. Congratulations. And we'll get your certificate to you as well. Okay, the next one goes to Bolton High School, Ainsley Hiran. Ainsley is an intelligent, highly motivated, and altruistic student with unlimited potential. She excels academically and has made significant contributions to Bolton High School and their surrounding community. Ainsley finds success in all that she does, not just because of her intellect, but for her tireless work ethic, meticulous organization, and her endless pursuit of knowledge. Her teachers report that Ainsley sees every lesson, every discussion, and every assignment as an opportunity to learn and grow. Ainsley prioritizes her time in service to her school and the surrounding community. She serves as a secretary of the National Honor Society, is an active member on Student Council, coaches, and is a percussionist. Ainsley competes on the swim team and shares her talent by teaching swimming lessons to children at the YMCA. These qualities and more make Ainsley a very deserving recipient of this award. Ainsley is planning on majoring in biochemistry and is deciding on which school to attend in the fall. Congratulations, Ainsley. Oh, she's in Florida, okay, I did not know that. Our next recipient is also with Florida, I did know that. It is Bolton High School senior Andrew Goodness. Andrew excels academically and has enveloped himself in every aspect of Bolton High School. He is one of those special individuals who has and will continue to make significant contributions in his future field of study, workplace, and surrounding community. Andrew has worked tirelessly to balance a rigorous course load and is a reliable and consistent participant in many clubs and activities. Not only has Andrew served as a student representative for the Board of Ed for the past two years, he is also a member of the BHS baseball and track teams, serves as a vice president of Student Council, president of the National Honor Society, drama club member, and musician. He has attained high levels of success across all disciplines and is in the process has become a future on a role at BHS. Andrew's strong leadership qualities are evident in all that he does. His teachers report that no matter what the obstacle, Andrew finds a way to overcome them. Andrew is deciding on which post-secondary school to attend and plans on studying sports communications. Congratulations, Andrew. I hope you guys. All right, our next awards are the CAPS Awards. And this is the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award. It's presented annually to students from the graduating Bolton Center School and Bolton High School's classes. The award is presented to those students who show a strong commitment to academics and a strong commitment to the school community. So the first award goes to BCS Award, Cora Murray. Cora Murray, of course, here, she can have it stand up. Cora Murray was selected by the eighth grade team as one of the CAPS recipients this year. Cora is an academically high-achieving student, consistently making high honors throughout her time in middle school. In addition to being dedicated to her academics, she participates in a variety of clubs and activities at BCS, including art club, robotics, student council, book club, cross-country, and more. You are busy. The past three years, she was also selected to participate in the Eastern Regional Middle School Festival. With Student Council this year, she has helped to organize a food drive, fundraisers, and school dances. Outside of school, she has also volunteered to help teach dance to younger students. Overall, Cora is an excellent representation of BCS by being involved in her school community and a leader to who cares. Congratulations, Cora, we are looking forward to all your future success. If you have your certificates, come in, the CAPS awards are. All right, the next award is for Madeline Rate. Is Madeline here? Yep. Madeline Rate has made a positive impact on our school community and beyond. The Bolton Center School community has benefited from her consistent involvement in the Student Council, helping out with spirit weeks, middle school dances, and food drives. You're also very busy. The town of Bolton has benefited from her active involvement in Girl Scouts, participating in food drives and trail cleanup efforts. She has maintained a strong academic record through her time receiving honors through middle school, the band award as well as the ELA award. We are so proud of Madeline and congratulate her on this honor. The first high school award goes to Michaela Maynard. Michaela is a model student at Bolton High School, demonstrating respect. Is Michaela here, or is she in Florida too?
I don't know if she was, I don't think she was. I'm not sure.
Okay. So I'll start it. She's a model student at Bolton High School, demonstrating respect, responsibility, and bringing an overall positive energy to all that she encounters. Michaela is an actively engaged member in all classes ranging from AP Literature to AP United States Government. She has distinguished herself as an exceptional student who doesn't shy away from a rigorous course load. While she thrives academically, Michaela has also consistently participated in several extracurricular activities in and outside of school. To name a few, she's an active Student Council member, editing chief of the BHS Literary Magazine, yearbook editor, NHS member, volleyball coach, and percussionist. Through these activities, Michaela is able to give back to her community while also fulfilling her own interests. For example, Michaela has written and illustrated, wow, a child's book that she is pursuing getting published. Michaela's strong work ethic and character makes her a deserving recipient of this award. She's in the process of selecting which post-secondary institution to attend in the fall and plans to pursue a double major in creative writing and marketing. Congratulations, Michaela. The next award goes to Jake Young. It is with great pride to recognize Jake Young for this award. Jake's strong work ethic and determination are qualities that do not go unnoticed in Bolton High School community. Jake's teachers report year after year that he is a dedicated and compassionate student who is willing to step outside of his comfort zone and take academic risks. He sees every day as an opportunity to do his best and prepare for his future. On top of Jake's academic obligations, he also commits his time to BHS's basketball and baseball teams, a part-time job, and gives back to the community as a coach and mentor to aspiring young athletes. They're very busy as well. It is this type of self-discipline and dedication to others that propels him in and outside of the classroom. Jake is planning on studying political science and playing college basketball at William Penn University in the fall. Congratulations, Jake.
That's all the awards, right?
Yes.
So we have those evening, so if anyone wants to join us for the regular part of our meeting, you're welcome to stay. If you would like to leave, now is a great time.
Congratulations, everybody.
Comments from the audience? Anyone remaining who would like to make a comment? Think we have any additions to the agenda, correct?
Correct.
All right, on to routine business items and the approval of minutes. We have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Education Business Meeting.
All right, the motion.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or edits on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed, abstaining? All right, Board of Ed Committee reports and finance.
So we met yesterday for our finance committee meeting, we had myself on that and Saul. And so from a budget standpoint, we're sixty-three percent expended. That's just assuming full expenditures at this point. No reason to change any of those projections at this point. Overall, we're projecting a balance of the budget of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So if you can actually go to the third page of this long schedule, wanted to talk about some of the transfers that are being requested and what, you know, think about what we want to do in terms of, you know, the give back for the next year. So you'll see there's four hundred and thirty-five thousand, there are transfers, two large transfers that will require approval over on the bottom left of the chart, we'll go through those in a second. Those total one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That leaves a remaining projected balance after that transfer request of three hundred and fourteen thousand. And then we are thinking about a commitment towards the next year's budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is a projected transfer to cover food service fund deficit of eighty thousand dollars, which we talked earlier in this year that we were expecting that will probably be in a deficit just because of increased, you know, food costs and labor costs as well. And so that would be our revised projected balance, you know, for the remainder of this year to give us any cushion of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. So I figure we'll start with the transfer requests first, and Beth, feel free to correct me where I go straight here. So the first one is to request a transfer of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from salaries and benefits to operation equipment. And that's to finish the BCS shades replacement. So the blinds at BCS are from the nineteen nineties, many of them are broken and do not work. I've also heard that there's some glare issues as well for the rooms that have not had the blinds replaced. And back in twenty twenty-one, they were deemed by the CAPA Committee not to qualify as part of the CAPA budget. So in twenty twenty-two, we moved forward and replaced a portion of the blinds at BCS with the operating funds. So at this point, some of the blinds have been replaced, leaving, you know, some of the rest of the building needing to be replaced. So at this point, the request is to look to complete this project. The amount would be, again, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And I, you know, have heard that it is a pretty competitive rate because of the time at which they'd be able to do it. So anything else to add there, Beth?
No, I think you covered all of that, actually.
So I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve that transfer request.
So moved.
The second. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the blinds at BCS?
The only comment, you know, that I'd say here is it's not just, you know, to get the blinds, you know, the optically, you know, I think it actually is needs to be repaired. So that's the only discussion that we had during finance committee.
We have a have some have not situation in the school where we have some people with newer blinds and other people with issues.
But it's not just a cosmetic.
That's the word I was looking for yesterday.
Actually, I did get that information from John.
Okay.
So we did, we had some discussion at Finance Committee about the remaining blinds and why they were being replaced. And John B said that about a third of them are mechanically not working. A third are missing pieces, slats and pieces, cords and things. And the remaining third are probably cosmetic, but since we're doing all the rest and they've been around since the nineties, it seemed to be a good idea to put those in that part of the project.
And do you know how much it cost last time?
Yes, let me have that, I think it was twenty.
Just curious how compared to the thirty-three thousand.
I know we have one of them there somewhere, maybe so second. It was twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. And that was half or a third?
That was.
Somewhere in the middle.
Somewhere, yeah. Yeah, the cost of the line just. Only two thousand dollars. Yep.
I did speak with John Butromovich a week or two ago. And we did touch on this, and he said that John boils their slow time of year, so it's a good deal. And that they're on the state bid, so that's why we're doing the waiver request.
I think it's also they're giving us an off-season rate because it's not high season for the blinds.
Yes, yeah, and that's who we used the last time also.
Yeah.
Are they, they're not blinds like this, they're like mini blinds?
They're not.
They're post-it like this. And they're like vertical and any read and ignore.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about lines? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, we have blinds. Next, computers?
The second is to request a transfer of eighty-six thousand five hundred of salaries and benefits to instructional technology. And that is to purchase eighty-four devices and twenty monitors. So what's happening here is these devices are up, they're on a seven-year replacement cycle, and they're up to be replaced in FY twenty twenty-seven. However, as of October, this coming October twenty twenty-five, these devices currently running Windows ten will no longer receive the critical security updates for which, you know, we really need, and this was, you know, highlighted by Novus, I believe. And so what that entails is twenty-five devices at BCS. That includes three teacher desktops, ten mini PCs and monitors for the STEM classroom, and twelve Chrome boxes for the library kiosks and student workstations. And then at BHS, that's fifty-nine devices plus twenty monitors, twenty-nine teacher desktops, twenty-one computer lab desktops, and twenty monitors, as well as a handful of other individual computers as well. So given that, you know, we'll have that exposure in October of twenty twenty-five, and they're on the seven-year, you know, replacement cycle anyways. Really, the intention is to bring this in and do this a little earlier with the excess funds here. So that is really the purpose of that transfer.
So we have a motion to transfer a six thousand five hundred dollars from salaries and benefits to technology shipments.
A second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the computer replacement? I, I was wondering what happens if we don't? Like, if we were to not make this change? And like, do the computers, I mean, for my technology ignorance also, like, Windows run these computers, and so they would not be able to be run? Or certain programs will not be able to be run?
They'll turn on.
They'll turn on, but you wouldn't be able to use them?
Things like that. But they won't be able to push out the security updates that we need, that we've been working hard for to make sure that our network stays secure. So the updates, the patches, everything that Microsoft puts out, they will not be able to be updated after this change. And then some of the software that we use may not be available on it. The, for example, twenty of them are for that library lab where we do AP Computer Science. That's also where the monitors are going because, for some reason, that room has slightly older monitors. So they need the correct connections. Yeah, that's.
So the monitors that we're using now will be recycled in-house?
We have a recycling, I think they use recycle. They take our old devices and they also take anything with a hard drive and give us a certificate of disruption. So it doesn't just go to, we know how to do it anytime.
Other piece to that, Andrew, is also it will impact our cyber.
Ah.
Our cyber insurance.
Oh.
Because it's cyber risk.
Do all BHS students get laptop? Or they have Chrome.
Yeah, in fact, what we did, some of the Chrome boxes, it's like, it's like a Chromebook on steroids. So things like these desktop stations in the library where they're looking up the card catalog and just searching some basic things, we're replacing those with the Chrome boxes. But the library media specialist here, there are a couple of devices that we use for running the cricket for the maker's case and things like that. So we three need a PC there. This PC is one of the ones that is wanting to be replaced. So we were very careful, we were able to deploy software, so we were able to see the warranty of every device, what device was going to be out. So we need some very careful decisions to say, this doesn't have to be replaced with a whole PC. This can be replaced with a different device. The STEM lab, for example, in at BCS, we, when we talked to Dory Moore, she said one of the things she needs is a space. So this setup is much too big for her, so we found a smaller form factor, mini PC that's just as powerful, that has a monitor, so the kids can still work without all of this in the way, so that was slightly less expensive, so it just kind of worked out in her favor. And then we're like, you got all the monitors and all the teacher desktops, so in good shape, and now we have connections. You're very careful about where we need replacements.
With the computers that we have now, you don't just put Windows eleven on those ones, or you could, but it wouldn't be worth the time and money because we need new ones anyway.
Yeah, that was funny, Microsoft announced that in early two thousand twenty-three. And we were really going, great. And then Novus was able to deploy some software, so we knew the exact age of every device. So we could get pretty granular. And basically, absolutely had to be replaced.
How long, when did Windows ten come out? Like, five, eight, ten years?
If you remember correctly, like, you can't run a PC that's running Windows XP anymore, which is a quick time replace.
Okay.
Right? So if that's not going to run anything, it won't get any updates. You won't be able to run most software because the software starts to outstrip the operating system. You know, and as Cassel said, it leaves us vulnerable. It leaves our network vulnerable, we can't add those patches and security updates.
So these were bought about five years ago, and then Windows ten was original to them?
Yes, they're, I think they're actually a little bit older, they were six, we were hoping they were going to be seven, that was the original.
Okay.
Generally, a desktop slide should be about seven years because it doesn't, it's not like a laptop, if something happens to the keyboard, you replace the keyboard. It's easier to take it apart and do a repair. You don't have to, you don't have to replace the entire thing. So they're very easy to repair, they're easy to extend or longevity. It's just this was a critical update that we weren't really, I don't know.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just say for the public, it's that this cost would be coming anyway, so you know, another year. So it's not like it's an incremental cost, it's a shift in timing. And I think the timing just makes sense to do it. Yeah.
So in our budget discussions a year from now. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? Now we have our regular, smaller March transfers.
Yeah, most everyone wants to go through these individually, but they are rather small.
I may not read them all. Athletic banner upgrade for Class S champion reclass, three hundred and forty dollars. Transfer some systems to instructional technology to cover shortfall for failed BCS interactive board, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars fifty-three cents. A reclass to cover tech ed drones purchase for eight hundred dollars. A reclass transfer instructional supply from BHS to BCS for four hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. A reclass to cover art supplies for thirty dollars and eighty-one cents. The transfer for the public address spell system upgrade at BCS that we approved last month. The reclass to cover world language purchase of additional Spanish one textbooks for one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. A reclass to cover the cost of potatoes for the staff appreciation potato bar on three twenty-five twenty-five for forty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. A reclass to cover world language shortfall for teacher discovery supplies of ninety-seven cents. And a reclass transfer from BHS to BCS to cover the balance for CMEAPD for a teacher of one hundred eighty-five dollars and one cent. So we have a motion to approve those March transfers.
So moved.
Well, second, we got a second there, only three firsts. Anyone have any questions about any of these?
So it's very precise with their ninety-seven cents. Have we accounted for?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Are we all set in finance?
Well, later on in the agenda, we have some bid waivers.
We have to do bid waivers for things that we just transferred.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And we'll do it then.
Did we say spotlight is never changing the landscape?
I didn't, I think it was assuming.
We'll make sure we're covering everything. All right.
But there is, so that leaves us after these approved transfers, that leaves us with a balance after the transfer request of the three hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
So later on in the agenda, we'll talk about the approval of admitting a hundred and fifty thousand to FY twenty-six budget. You want to do that now?
We can just do everything in order.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing else.
That is all for finance. Do we have any community meeting reports? I see our PTA representatives not here, do you have anything?
I will not do as good of a job as Lindsay, they just did their Krispy Kreme fundraiser, they raised over thirteen hundred. They have their spring gala, April twenty-sixth at Elicit. May thirteenth is the art show and ice cream social. Our teacher is working very hard, it's a pop art theme this year, she's got scavenger hunt. Seems like lots of fun things, and they're also doing a BOGO book fair for Scholastic the same day as the Ice Cream Social, and then Teacher Appreciation Week is the week of May fifth. So they are collecting donations, there's going to be a coffee truck one day. I think one of the days is maybe St. Cody Mayo theme. Yeah, they're busy. Maybe I don't know if I'm missing anything. I maybe I don't know if I'm missing anything, alright, that's all.
Um yes.
Yeah, I attended the March Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting, um. I can report that uh in March, we had twenty-five Bolton High School National Honor Society students participate in our phone-a-thon. Um. Their assistance is greatly appreciated, they managed to call every number on the list this year. And our scholarship application is now open through the BSF website. Um applications must be submitted by eleven fifty-nine PM on May fourth. Um I also wanted to note that this year, because of the potential conflict of interest, my son is graduating and will likely apply for a scholarship. I've stepped down from the scholarship fund's scholarship selection subcommittee and will not participate in any way. In the deliberations or votes for this year scholarships, I just want to make the public aware of that. That's it.
Uh are there any other committee meetings to report on? Like, are usuals? I'll now turn things over to Director Gold Snyder for the tonight's superintendent of schools report.
So Jared, you wanna go first?
Good evening, so March was a very busy month, a successful month particularly for Reader Across America. Our staff did an outstanding job with having guest readers in the building for a couple of weeks. Um the enthusiasm and participation from both the staff and students was tremendous, it really was, we had uh book bingo, we had um. Teachers reading to students, like every day there was something, and Mrs. Keller did a phenomenal job of uh guiding that work with the morning announcements and getting the kids excited. On March twentieth and twenty-first, we hosted a successful round of parent, teacher and student like conferences. Attendance was very strong, I had a group of students for student like conferences myself and just the. The energy and the reflection that the students have from that experience, I don't think they realize it until they're done and they're like, wow. That feels really good, so the parents are very proud of their children and the leaders of the groups are very proud because they put a lot of work over a series of months into that. Um attendance was strong, as I mentioned, and the energy throughout the building was very positive. The conferences provide a valuable opportunity for parents, students and teachers to connect and to discuss their progress. Following the conferences, Director Gold Snyder, ten other staff members and myself led eighty-six, seventh and eighth graders to Washington DC. Uh the trip was filled with enriching experiences, including tours, museum visits. Um and very, and a lot of memorable learning opportunities, uh these types of trips truly are lasting um. Memories and have a lasting impact on students, creating memories that they'll cherish forever. Uh there's many memorable moments that the staff and Director Oldsire and myself can recall from the bus ride of eight hours down and eight hours back. And and very long days. Um a special acknowledgement to Mrs. Pelter for stepping up to lead the organization of the trip. As you can recall, Mr. Lambert, who retired, would come to the meetings and present about the upcoming trips and she stepped up and took over organizing it, which is a. A heavy left, uh her efforts ensured a smooth and successful experience for all. Spring sports are now in full swing with baseball and softball teams and it's been cold, beginning their practices and games. Uh the energy and enthusiasm among the student athletes is evident and they look forward to a great season. Our PBIS and school leadership committee continue to plan and implement fun and engaging student events. Some recent events, and you heard one earlier with the potato bar, some others are staff breakfast, underground spirit days and book clubs. Uh all of which contribute to a positive and connected school culture. Looking ahead on the school calendar, we have spring recess coming up next week. And then soon after that, April twenty-ninth, we'll begin our state testing, which will span the entire month of May. Um we anticipate many other exciting end of year events, promotion, uh class night and many others. And we love to celebrate our students' hard work and achievements. Any questions? I think I'm still recovering from DC. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read Mr. Maselli's report for tonight, he is um in his hometown being given an award, a public safety award for his service on the. Police commission, I believe it is, so he's not here tonight. So uh the Fulton High School Concert Band and Concert Choir students departed for Orlando, Florida. To participate in the Disney soundtrack session workshops, students will work with Disney clinicians to choose and rehearse excerpts. Of Disney mu- movie soundtracks and create professional quality recordings to mash up with movie clips. They're gonna be busy as well, um students will enjoy experiences in the Disney parks and will return to Bolton on Sunday, April eleventh. As you can notice, our two Board of Ed student reps are not here, Grace and Andrew are part of this trip, so that's why um their absence is is noticed. Um but they did leave a report for us. Uh our seniors are breathing a big sigh of relief as the big capstone night was last week, for anybody who attended, capstone was phenomenal, the projects. And the were were so good, we have a table back there of a few, just a sampling of a few. Um capstone projects that students wanted to display, so please be sure to take a look. The lovely pen I was using earlier is made by a student, we're part of this capstone project, so take a look, they're really great. Uh we hope you got a chance to view a few samples of the work on the table, if not, stayed on the way out. This year's plan included an opportunity for all BHS student and faculty to preview senior projects during the school day. With the hopes this helps underclassmen start to generate ideas and and get ready for their big day. Our jazz percussion and concert bands performed a few weeks ago and our chorus performers have their next show on May thirtieth. We've been able to record and post all these performances on our YouTube channel, so if you have missed them, you can view the concerts there. We're also happy to announce we have kicked off our spring season for athletics with softball, baseball, track, golf and women's tennis.
We will move on to unfinished business and we have a bunch of secondary policies to approve tonight. So could we have a motion to approve the following policies, four, one, one, eight? Non-discrimination, four, one, two, oh, dot four, sections five oh four and ADA. Five, one, three, one, student discipline, five, one, four, five, section five oh four ADA students. Five, one, four, five, dot four, non-discrimination students. Five, one, four, five, dot five, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Six, one, seven, one, dot three, the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. And six, two, zero, five, promotion and retention. Motion to approve their policies. Yes, second?
A second.
Um does anyone have any questions or comments further about these policies, we've had a month more than to review them?
How, how frequently are they updated or changed on ever or?
It really depends.
Common or, okay.
It it is very common throughout the year to have a suite of policies.
Right.
Um it's more typical in the fall because laws tend to get passed and go into effect late summer or early fall. Uh but this is not a typical.
Okay.
Chris? Uh any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Alright, on to new business, the Bolton Center School blinds bid waiver. Um could we have a motion to approve the bid waiver? To award John Boyle decorating a bid for the BCS blinds that we discussed earlier.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Ria.
Second.
Um anyone have any questions or comments about this?
We need to state the amount of the bid. Where did that, I can't remember if we normally do that.
Yeah, I don't know, can't hurt.
Okay. Yeah, would you like to amend your motion to include the lines figure of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars? Was that, you okay with that?
Sure, yes, thirty-three thousand seven hundred.
Same motion, but with the figure we discussed earlier, okay. Um anyone else have questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Alright, on to the computers, could we? Have a motion, please, to approve the bid waiver toward CDW, the bid for the eighty-four computers and twenty monitors. For the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
But I think that changed, but it's ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, sorry. That was, I think, Monica got a late, late afternoon.
Transferring.
We're okay with the transfer, there's money for the transfer, Cassel said we didn't need to make any more transfer, we just need to.
Okay.
To do this for the bid.
Okay, so we don't need to transfer more money, but um. Just restate that, we have a motion to approve the bid waiver toward CDW, the bid for the eighty-four computers and twenty monitors. In the amount of ninety-four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Make a motion.
Ria.
Second.
Uh does anyone have any questions about this?
Why, why did the bid go up?
Monica, I think you better. What's up? It's, it's a price increase and we're making as much as as immediately as we can to avoid any further price increases.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's, yeah, it's been all over the place, even today.
And the other two, yeah, and the other two vendors, um and I think part of it, it's partially what companies are doing, the other two vendors haven't even been able to commit to a price for it. We've been asking since late February.
Could we go back even after today to see if their price will change, just because?
I'd be very nervous that it's going to go up, the original expectation is, we were told to expect a possible increase of up to thirty percent. Um and this is not anywhere near that yet.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's interesting, it's a, it's a large item for us, um. Very uncertain times, but at the same time, I'd like to give it some time to shake out, um.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very fluctuating situation.
Correct.
I mean, most of the tariffs were put on pause, so unless they come from China, then.
These are, yeah. Wish I could control that, it's a seventy-eight hundred dollar difference.
Yeah.
And we have to commit to the full amount right now.
Um if I could break it up, but I don't think it's gonna result in much greater change, I don't see anyone having their pricing.
Right now.
Correct.
Right now.
So we're gonna be looking to move.
If you, if we.
Immediately, and if prices do go down, then too bad for us. As they go up, I mean, like, I just, I'm having my roof done, for instance, I'm like, we got fear monitor and now we just like. Have all these shingles sitting in our driveway, but they're gonna be there for months because we have to, we have our chimney worked on, and like, oh. But now wasn't a thing, but they went up anyway, they're not gonna come down, I guess, I mean, that's what everything does.
That once a company makes the increase, I don't.
Yeah.
See them bringing, bringing it down, regardless of circumstances.
Like with shingles, I was in construction and every time the price of oil would spike, the price of shingles would go up, but then when oil went back down, the price of shingles didn't go down. But when they spiked again, they went up again.
Yeah, I asked him this morning about, I said, you know, is this stable? Like, is this a stable cost at this price?
And nobody knows.
Yes, but they probably order sooner rather than later, other two vendors. Again, I've not committed to pricing, but I do know, I know exactly what you're saying, and I don't think we've come down from. Just thinking about like five years ago and a lot of things shot up for spry chain, they don't really come back down.
Yeah.
My flooring went up the same, the same as yours and it's across the country, not one.
But this is a little unusual, this is, this is just people speculating because of very, very uncertain times, things will stable out if it goes that way, but. Um I think my only concern is that it's going to go up.
And there's.
This, yeah.
Every hundred?
Yep.
I mean, as I see it, we have two options, we could approve spending eighty-six thousand and allow them to get what they can get for that amount. Um. Or we can approve the higher.
Just did, I am. What do you think?
Yeah, if you have the higher amount, it's some funding that we already have. That we won't necessarily have to spend, so it's smaller amounts, it's money that we had put aside for. Repairs and repair equipment that we didn't need because of our accidental damage plan, so. The devices that we had that happened to have issues happen to be covered by that plan and they weren't all the devices, so we saved so many. Um and some other, so that's why the announcer different, okay, the transfer and bid waiver. Um we also had money put aside for cases that for the students, but our vendor for the phone books, which that where it was placed. Around those who work at there, um they were coming pre-chased with a slim case on them, so now we don't have to spend that additional money on the cases for students, so. Some of that, in that gap, is savings from those items. And so we already have those sitting in our budget line for technology hardware and materials, so. That's, that accounts for the discrepancy in those announcements.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about this bid waiver? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed abstaining? Alright, on to the fiscal year twenty-five Board of Ed budget commitment to the Finance Committee for. Towards the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Um I believe we mentioned earlier that. We are suggesting a hundred fifty, so I guess. Could we have a motion to commit a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Finance Committee from? The fiscal year twenty-five budget savings toward the fiscal year twenty-six budget, please. Um does anyone have any questions or comments about this figure?
It's a good start.
Yeah. Yes, and I suspect we'll be happy to hear that tomorrow for a discussion. We're comfortable with this number, I guess. Same question I ask every year, this time.
It still leaves eighty-five thousand dollars in question right now, so I'm sure the number will go up.
And we're not gonna find that some computer program is gonna be irrelevant in a couple of months, like a couple of weeks from now and the next month, need like another hundred thousand dollars. But then two hundred thousand because we have a hundred fifty percent tariff.
Yeah, what, what is the biggest remaining risk, um is it school facility kind of maintenance type? Something from John type of risk or?
I would say probably, yes, okay.
Um okay, anyone have any other questions or comments about this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Alright, on to the substitute pay rate.
Can we talk a little bit?
Sure, yes.
So currently, we have daily subs in both buildings, we don't do a subservice any longer, we have um subs that are assigned to the buildings. We're currently paying them eighteen dollars and forty-six. Dollar, eighteen dollars forty-six cents an hour, we're recommending that we increase that to twenty dollars an hour, just to be a little bit more competitive with surrounding towns. Um so that's, we have put that in the budget for that place and we're asking for that to be approved.
So could we?
Oh, I'm sorry, make a vote.
Yeah, we have a motion to increase the substitute pay rate to twenty dollars per hour for the fiscal year twenty. Six school year.
A second.
Alright, questions or comments?
So my question is, how many, you're saying that uh we have a certain number of full-time subs? Correct, daily subsidy, daily stuff, does that cover what our needs are and? For the most part, it it does, yeah, we have, I think, we tried for five at the center school.
Five.
Uh and then we have either two or three depending um at the high school. There's. And you, uh do you know what other towns are paying? I think when we looked at this, they were right around twenty, I think a couple were a little bit more than that, so we kind of. Went into like a, a middle of the road increase. And for long-term subs, what's, that's like if you had someone hired for a long-term position. They get a portion of the uh a bachelor, the bachelor's position. So we're able to cover now because we don't have to get a um long-term sub if you're here for.
So we're able to cover now because we don't have to get a um, long-term sub if you're here for, it used to be forty days. But now it's sixty days, so we're, we're a little bit lucky in that respect. We're able to cover a lot of our sub postings and positions with our daily subs. And some of our daily subs do have um bachelor's degrees at least, so we're, we do put those. People into the classrooms to cover the longer subpositions. And what is their, uh, how many hours do they? Are they a teacher's hours? Yes. Yeah. Yes. That's what seven and. Seven, there, I think they're like seven hours. Yeah, they do a seven-hour day. Seven-hour day?
Is the increased rate already accounted for in our proposed budget for next year?
Mm-hmm, yes.
When did we go to uh, like? We had a service before?
COVID was, well, it started right around the COVID time.
It's been a huge improvement.
Yeah, we couldn't.
So we have a continuity of subs, so people are familiar with the building and uh, because.
They never, both staff, different people's never been before, so. When a sub we have now or a daily sub is not in a specific classroom, we have, they have things where they'll go to math class and go to a small group of students, so they're never just not. Working, so they're in for a teacher who's out or they have other tasks that they don't.
And so it. Are, are they treated as contract employees? Or do you?
Treated as temporary employees.
But if they're here, I mean, does the IRS, is the IRS okay with that? If we're uh. Paying them to be here every day and requiring them to be.
We have to offer them now, we do have to offer them um, the ability to. Buy into the insurance, so that's changed a little bit, so we are doing that, so that, I think that kind of. Softens it a little bit and it makes it. O- okay to do. Uh, before, there were no benefits associated with it, but now we are, um, they, we are obligated to offer them. They can buy into, pay into the insurance.
What is the process to become a daily sub? Do they have to interview? Is it like a position that we interview?
Yes, it is, yeah. We do a regular interview for it and we want to make sure it's a good match and, you know, we certainly. We like when people have a bachelor's degree, um.
So we're interviewing for these positions, they have regular hours and. I, I mean, how, how are those not?
We don't pay them through payroll? We don't pay them through our payroll?
They get paid through payroll.
Okay.
Well, I would imagine they get paid through, yeah, through payroll. They do time cards and.
It's not like a ten ninety-nine employee.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I was thinking, thinking.
Not sure about, of the ten ninety-nine.
No, they're not contractors. They're, they're paid through payroll.
So they, and they're eligible for benefits and.
Right, they can pay into the insurance, yes. And we, they have. Now that we have CT paid sick leave, they're entitled to CT, CT paid sick leave hours as well. And they come in every day. They, they can't just say, no, I don't feel like coming in. No, they're here for, and we have some who have just opted to do maybe three days a week. They can't commit to five, so. We try to balance that with somebody who maybe wants to do the other two days a week, but if we get somebody who's really good, um, we'll take them for the three days if they can commit to that. We've made it work.
Five people, like eight people.
Yeah, sometimes it is.
Have they ever transitioned into a full-time employee? And.
We've offered a few people positions as like, as paras to see if they wanted to switch from a daily sub to a para because. Um, they've worked out really well and we thought it would be a good match and that they would be getting full benefits and some have. Opted to do that and others have said, no, I want to stay doing what I'm doing.
Just wonder if it was a good feeder program.
Yeah, it can be, yeah.
Other districts do something?
I'm pretty sure a lot of them do.
Or doing, yeah.
The way we're doing. The, the services like Kelly Services and things like that are really expensive to pay into and. The turnover is just tremendous. You never, well, not never, but rarely get the same person like two days in a row. If you have somebody else. Four or five days in a row, you might have four or five different people in there. At least now we have some continuity.
I agree.
So would these employees have the ability to unionize?
It's a good question. I'm not sure. I can have a conversation with Chris Hall about that and we can see that is. I, I mean, probably, I think. We probably could. I know. To the subject that I thought we ought.
Is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? As well, be so happy with our twenty dollars, so I don't have to think about all that kind of nonsense. All right, resignations. We have any of those?
We have one resignation for the end of the school year from uh, the high school math teacher, Irina Lavrov. And we also have a retirement, Donna Fisher, who is the BCS uh, social studies teacher, will be retiring at the end of the school year. I would like to thank both of them for their service and I, we wish them well.
How many years is Donna been here?
I, I'm not even sure. I know she told me during Washington, but that was a blur, to be honest with you. Yeah. I think she's been here as long as.
Worked more effectively than she saw kindergarten for.
Yeah, she's been on several different levels, very nice.
Good for her.
Yeah.
All right, um. And finally, for new business, we have two more policies that are first reads, but we are being asked to. Through. Do you have some insight into these?
Sure do.
We did get an email about them.
All right, so uh, we have policy. Oh, I'm sorry. I answer backwards. Okay, so we have policy twelve fifty. I'm actually gonna do them the reverse order because that's the way my notes are and. So I can do fourteen twenty first, school security and safety. Um, this policy needs to be updated to align with. Uh, this year's Public Act twenty-five dash one, which the Connecticut Legislature passed and Governor Lamak signed in early March. The law directs all school security and safety plans must now include clear protocols. For responding to in-person visits from immigration authorities, federal immigration authorities such as ICE or Homeland Security. Um, each school under the law is directed to designate an administrator to handle. These interactions following guidelines laid out by the Connecticut State Department of Education and any applicable law. Staff. Under the new policy. Are directed to request identification, review any warrants presented and consult with legal counsel before responding. Um. If outside personnel, immigration personnel approach other employees, uh, other personnel. Must direct immigration authorities to be designated administrator for any requests involving school access or information. We are updating both the policy and the accompanying administrative regulation to comply with the, the new law. Policy twelve fifty, visitors in schools, um. Both policy and the accompanying administrative regulation are being updated uh, for the same reason as policy fourteen twenty. Um. The policy and regulation add a new paragraph with guidance for how to handle visits from federal immigration authorities. And clarifies that school officials can direct visitors to refrain from engaging with students and or staff. Unless doing so is approved by the school and consistent with the purpose of the visit. Because the law that led to these revisions in the policy. Direct superintendents to designate the point person at each school no later than April first twenty twenty-five. That's why we need to try to get the policy and the administrative regulation in place as soon as possible, constantly that we can. Any questions?
Could we have a motion to approve policies twelve fifty and fourteen twenty?
So.
A second.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments regarding this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstaining. Oh, future business, don't seem to have any. So. Then could we have a motion to go into executive session? For a discussion concerning a temporary adjustment of job responsibilities and contract amendment for the director of HR and Student Support Services. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? All right, thank you for coming in, everyone.